Alderman Ship, absent. Alderman Geenan.
Here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spurgattis.
Present.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Mayor Chomes.
Here.
You have a call.
I'd like to say the pledge allegiance and then just keep standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And in our moment of silence, if we could remember those in Vegas and the other disasters that have happened in the U.S. Thank you. Item number five, please.
Minutes of the meeting of September 18th, 2017.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Then move to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Item six. Updates. We have the free leaf bag collection. City of Rock Island is providing free leaf collection for its resident residential refuge customers starting Monday, October 9th through Friday, December 1st. Customers must place the leaves in the approved paper yard waste bags and be placed at the normal refuge collection location and days. Free leaf bags may be picked up starting today at various locations throughout the city. You can visit www.rigov.gov.org for more information. Then we have the groove concert series. The free Thursday night groove concert series continues down at Stryber Park on Thursday, October 5th with the Candy Makers, a rock and soul band taking the stage. Event is open from 6:00 P.M. to 9:00 P.M. Rock Island Happy Joes will have pizza for sale and Bent River Beer will be available for purchase, of course, weather permitting. Hundredth birthday celebration. We celebrate the legacy of the Longview Park Chalet. Join the Rock Island Preservation Society, Friends of Longview Park, Rock Island Park and Rec, and the National Trust of Historic Preservation to celebrate the hundredth birthday of the Longview Park Chalet. The event will take place Sunday, October 8th, 2017, from 1:00 P.M. to 4:00 P.M. At Longview Park, 18th Avenue and 17th Street, Rock Island, of course. There will be children's activities, entertainment, free birthday cake and ice cream, and $3 brats, $2 hot dogs. For information, please contact Friends of Longview Park at 309-762-1876 or 309-786-7917. Thank you. Item number seven.
Presentation of Tell on Your Neighbor Awards by the Beautification Commission.
So just for everybody's knowledge, this is the 43rd year of Tell on Your Neighbor, the event where neighbors nominate neighbors for their remarkable, neat, and well-maintained yards. Members of the Rock Island Beautification Commission also nominated yards for this year's event. The program recognizes residents who make an extra effort to beautify their yards beyond the norm. The Beautification Commission believes these citizens should be recognized for their efforts, which encourage others to keep well-groomed yards in the assets of the city. The Beautification Commission viewed a photo slideshow of the nominated homes and then selected the winners. This year, 28 Rock Island residents are being recognized by their efforts. The names of these winners will be read by myself. Those present should come forward when their names are called to receive their certificate. Tonight, we will see the slides of the winning yards so everyone can see contributions of these residents have made to the neighborhoods and to the city. So please, once everybody comes up, stay sanded up here and we'll do a photo op here at the end. So, the first one, if these people are here, is Sandra Hickman. Is she here? There we are. Come on up. Through? There, we got the pictures up there to go along with it here, so great. William and Jean Burton. They might have been here, but it doesn't look like it at this point. How about Jane and Dennis Woodward, Sr.? Did they make it? No? Diane Von Dreske. Diane? How about?
Hey.
Vicky Duncan. Oh, there you are, there you are, okay. There you go, you're with Diane, all right. Okay. Kathy and Don Healy.
Make a circle.
Well done. Bill Anderson. Molly Forsland and Dennis DePaul. Gary and Linda Rowe. There they are. Robert and Nancy Graff. Diane Brickle? Is she able to make it or not? No? I don't think so. Brian and Vicky Borzek. Where's it? Charles Muscavelli. No, couldn't make it. Geraldo Perez. Make it? No? Lizzie Nimmer. Westgate Condominium. Perry and Linda Davis here? Okay. Dave Henson. Nope, we mailed it. Debbie Wenderhoff? And I probably goofed that one up, I apologize. Janice Berry. Julie Daly. Karen and Mike Hines. Hines? No? Okay. Forrest and Kathy Belzer. Glenn and Ann Cook. Don't see them. Dan and Eddie Pearson. Eddie Pearson. Charlie and Mary Arnold. Big group. How about Jeffrey and Amber Mortz? No? Thomas McGreevy. Answer them being here? Arthur and Rose Steinbach? No? And Michelle Cooperman? Koopman? No? Well, thank you very much for the ones that are everybody, and we work on getting a picture, but thank you very much for your commitment and please keep up the great work. It makes the city look good. Are we ready, Virgil? Virgil, there's not one there for you. Virgil, how'd you end up with one? All right. All right. We will continue on with the agenda?
You learn something every day.
Absolutely.
Item number eight.
A special ordinance authorizing the acquisition of nine tax auction properties in the city of Rock Island in the amount of $7,276.
Would you consider suspending the rules and passing the ordinance?
Second. Moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, could we have the addresses of those properties, please? Do you have those?
I believe they've been read off one other time. This is the second time around for these. Second.
You got it?
It's in the detail.
Oh, okay, it's up there now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays. Motion passed.
Item number nine.
Claims. A, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one and final in the amount of $215,651.71 to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois for the 24th Street Water Main Extension, RIFAC to Hodge Locust Condos Project for services provided from July 25th, 2017 through September 15th, 2017. And B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number 21 in the amount of $320,120.32 to Brand Construction of Rock Island Mylan, Illinois for the Sixth Avenue Relief Sewer Project for sewer, water main, pavement, driveways, and sidewalk work.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments as recommended for claim items A and B.
Second. Moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spurgattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 10.
Claims for the weeks of September 15th through September 21st in the amount of $471,762.31 and September 22nd through September 28th in the amount of $414,452.53 and payroll for the weeks of September 11th through September 24th in the amount of $1,449,516.11.
Move to allow the claims and payroll?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 11.
Report from the Finance Department regarding bids for professional auditing services recommending the bid be awarded to Lauterbach and Eamon LLP of Warrenville, Illinois in the amount of $307,650 for fiscal years ending December 31st, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second. It's been moved to second. Any discussion?
Is Stephanie here? Stephanie, can you explain, so in terms of hiring this firm to do auditing, what do those final reports look like? Are those just, they say that everything that's been done is lawful and in order? Or is there any sort of input in terms of the financial efficiency and use of the funds in that department?
So auditing of the financial records of the city is at a high level, so they don't get down into detail, so it's basically, they're basically saying that the audited financial statements are reasonable in nature. And the reports include the CAFR, which is submitted in adherence with GAAP financial statements. And then in addition, there are several other mandatory reports that they assist with, one of them being tip reports to the Comptroller's Office, AFR, which also goes to the Comptroller's Office, and completing R990 for the MLK Center.
So something I've observed in the last couple of years in receiving these kind of reports is that as the fiduciary managers of the city and our job to approve the budget and oversee that, I find that those reports are helpful to a limited extent. It lets us know in the big picture, things are functioning as they should, that there isn't something glaringly obvious. My concern in sort of, and I think this can and does happen in any type of institution, private or public, where there are things that can be seen from the outside, not to say kind of gotcha or to catch people up, but to have helpful suggestions to the policymakers to say, listen, there's some ways you can improve efficiency around here. I think a lot of us up here are interested in that. Is there any, in terms of this particular firm, do they have that expertise? Could they look at it at a deeper level? I know that would cost more, but could they, in terms of providing that not just to staff but to council, that sort of detailed report to say, we went in there and we really combed through. And we went into the department and we looked at things. Because I don't think it's right for us to, as the council members, to, you know, we're not going to go into the office day to day. We don't have the knowledge necessarily to do that, and it's not appropriate for us to be there. But in terms of this firm, can they do that?
They certainly can. Lauterbach is a firm that's here in the state of Illinois. They have 95 employees. Their sole business is government. Their client list is rather long. The engagement that we hired them for is for audit of the financial statement, so it wouldn't be any other type of engagement. One thing with auditors is you do have to keep in mind independence.
Right.
So if you're looking for some other type of review, then we would possibly need to go out for bid for services to find what the scope is of the engagement and go out for RFP and possibly consider another auditing firm that also has governmental experience. As part of the audit, a big part of any audit is testing of internal controls. And that testing of internal controls is part of the preliminary audit. And there is a report on internal controls that is contained within our audit. And those are contained in communications to the council, which are part of our audit document that's on the website as well. And so it does speak to compliance with CVBG, with cash handling guidelines, accounts payable guidelines in within. That communication with council and staff are often, this is okay, but you could do this to be more efficient. And so that is part of the high-level work of the audit, and very important.
And I'm speaking more in terms of, the past couple of years, I know we've had major transition in the city. We've had new staff come in. We've had folks who've been in positions for a long time. We have new council members in place now. And I think it would be a comfort to me, whether it's this firm or a different firm, to come in and do that sort of exhaustive comb through and really give us that firsthand experience or that firsthand report that we don't get to see. Because again, I've seen these reports. We've gotten them from different firms. You know, the unqualified opinion. And I think that's great. I think that's reassuring to an extent. But I don't know that that fully satisfies what I'd like to see. And not that this is something that we need to commit to a 2021 schedule, but we could say every 10 years, we do a comb through for ourselves and for the taxpayers to say, we're trying our best to be efficient. I know these things happen a lot in the private sector where you bring outside consultants in and they throw all sorts of plenty. We don't need to go that route, but just if it's this group, and I agree with what you're saying in terms of, it wouldn't be the auditors that would do that. It'd probably have to be a different set of people, professionals who are in there probing for a different set of questions. So I would say unless there's major objection from members of the council that we could at least look at what that might cost.
So one thing to keep in mind is a high-level audit, not getting down into detail, but testing random samples of accounts payable transactions, cash-receiving transactions of $60,000 a year. So that's one thing to keep in mind. So a more in-depth review would be more than $60,000, so that's something to keep in mind. A recommendation that comes to my mind is, in my past experience with a review of the audit and which is part of our Audit RFP, is that the auditors can come and present to the council a review of the auditor much more expansive than the time that we have historically allowed. So my last 13 years at Park Forest, we reviewed the annual audit with council on a Saturday morning. We would start at about 9:00 and get done about 12:30. So it was a three and a half hour review of going through the audit. And by doing that, you get much better understanding and much more back and forth feedback of dialogue with the auditor. And that would be something that would be contained within our audit engagement that we presented to you now.
Have we used this firm before?
Lauterbach and Eamon, we have not used them as our auditors.
They'll be bringing a fresh eyes to the audit as well.
Yes, so we do have audit rotation as a result of this contract.
Yes, Stephanie, how many firms actually bid on this?
We received eight bids.
And were some of them local?
One was local, and that would be the audit firm that we've had for the last five years, the last five audits, and they're out of Moline. They were not the low bidder.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you, Stephanie, for answering my questions. And for the, as you put in the memo, this was clearly a team effort, exhaustive review, looking at a lot of bids, so I appreciate the diligence in doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, then if we could do a roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spurgattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 12.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the 2017 sidewalk agreement with the Rock Island Mylan School District, recommending the school district reimburse the city of Rock Island for the cost of materials not to exceed $7,000, and the Municipal Services Division provide all labor for the project.
Move to approve the agreement as recommended.
Second. Moved to second. Any discussion?
I will be abstaining as I'm an employee of the school district.
Okay.
Just a comment. This is apparently a very good partnership with the school system, the school district, the city of Rock Island. It serves to benefit all the public who use sidewalks.
It is. Working together. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark abstain. Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, one abstention.
Item 13.
Report from the Police Department regarding a renewal of the current dry cleaning contract with Burke Cleaners Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa, recommending a one-year extension through December 31st, 2018 with a 2% price increase for a total amount of $7,876.
Motion? Move to approve the contract renewal with the price increase as recommended. Second. Moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes, I had a question. I believe this is correct. We have Burke Cleaners in Rock Island, but the headquarters is in Davenport. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. I think that's what everyone was... Thank you for clarification, Mr. Mayberry.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spurgattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Seven eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 14.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for the installation of a handicap parking space at 1836 Seventh Street.
Motion to combine items 14, 15, and 16. Recommend that, request that the... Request is recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance. The reason you're putting them all together, or? They're all from traffic and engineering.
Well, I believe, didn't you want to withdraw?
No, I was 17.
Oh, 17, okay.
Some comments I wanted to make about 16. Could we do 14 and 15 together and then do 16 separately? I'll withdraw my motion.
But just do 14 and 15 together, Steve.
I'll make a motion to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance for item 14.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Curious. Item 15.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Alderman Parker for the installation of stop signs along Eighth Avenue at 19th Street.
Move to... This is...
You can say approve.
Sorry. Where I move to not deny the request as recommended? Is that to put stop signs up, then? Please clarify.
The same as moving to approve the stop signs. To not deny or to approve is the same thing.
Okay. So my motion was to approve the stop signs?
You could just say to approve.
Yes. Denying the recommendation, approving the stop signs. That's what I want to do.
Yes.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Well, first off, I would just like to say, I am relatively new on this council. I don't know, is this the first time that we've utilized mailing out requests to citizens about a request for a stop sign? No? Oh, done ever, okay. Well, this is the first time I had seen it, so I thought that was really nice. I know we've had discussions here before where one person brings up a stop sign issue and nobody's here, and we don't really know what the public feels. So having the report from staff showing there was 12 people in agreement and two in opposition, that's very helpful for us to know. I... There was an accident at this intersection, unmarked intersection, and somebody reached out to me and said, hey, I think it'd be a good idea to have some sort of traffic marking here. And so I forwarded that along to staff, and they deny the request like they do for most of the requests that they get. But, you know, I think from what we can tell from the response from citizens, it's pretty well-wanted here. So I...
I was just going to say, for those at home, the report does say that there was a letter sent out and 17 supported the request. One did not support, and one just commented. My question, following up on what Alderman Parker here said, is having done one of these before in the past, what was required then was the individual who solicited the interest had to fill out a petition and walk the street. had to fill out a petition and walk the street. Is this new for sending letters, or is it kind of, I think we should be consistent one way or another on that. If we're going to send letters, we should send them for all, all these requests.
We do. So the petition is really to get the support, so we know there's really support for it. We get a lot of phone calls where somebody says, I want to reduce the speed limit, I'm going to get rid of parking, so we say, well, get a petition from your neighbors, and we never hear from them because they're the only one that supports it, so it just stops a lot of extra staff work if there's a petition up front.
So the petition kind of paves the way for the letter?
Right.
Okay.
Correct. I think in the past, maybe we didn't send letters out on everything
Sure.
that we should have, and now they're going out on everything. So for stop signs, the reason we typically deny is because we look at it strictly from a traffic point of view.
Yeah, right. No, we understand that, that's fine.
Yep. Thank you.
So could we have clarification on this item?
On the motion?
On the motion, yes, as far as...
The motion is to approve...
Not to deny.
Not to deny, and...
The motion, as I understand it, is to let these people have a stop sign at their intersection.
To approve the stop signs. Motion is to approve the stop signs.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Yep. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item 16.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Alderman Parker for the installation of stop signs along 15th Avenue at 28th Street.
Well, I would like to make a motion to... Now, this is very confusing. I need, I want to amend the original request, or at least bring it up for discussion, so I will first off just make the motion to not deny the request as recommended, and then we can have discussion. Correct? I can always just withdraw my motion.
You can.
Okay, for somebody's second, thank you.
Moved to second, and we have discussion.
So this one is a little bit more complicated, perhaps. While walking the neighborhood during, while we were campaigning, while I was campaigning, I had a resident say that he would like to have a stop sign at this particular intersection. Again, the responses from staff's letters shows the majority, I believe, support said stop sign. However, there is, I think there is a valid concern of the hill right there on, what is the avenue?
15.
15th, yes, thank you, especially during the winter months. So I guess I want to just open this up for, you know, general conversation. I don't take, I don't drive that route very often, I've, you know, I've only walked it while campaigning. So I was thinking, perhaps would yield signs, I don't know, from staff's perspective as well, I don't know if Larry is here, would yield signs be more appropriate? Do we want to table this and solicit more from the community first? I guess what would your, I mean, obviously staff's position is to not do anything, but would yield signs be better so that, it's slowing the traffic because the concern that I heard was, you know, my kids cross the street and all that good stuff, and they want to slow the traffic, but I think there is a valid concern of stopping at the top of a hill in the wintertime, so I don't know.
Sure, no, I mean, and the concern is, obviously, this particular intersection is a T-intersection.
Right.
28th Street dead ends in the 15th Avenue, 15th Avenue is a through street, so you already have a stop sign on the northbound traffic on 28th Street coming into 15th Avenue. If we place stop signs at the, on the 15th Avenue east-westbound, the eastbound is actually at the bottom of a hill, and the concern is, during icy or inclement conditions, traffic may not be able to stop and actually slide through the intersection because there hasn't been a stop sign before, and you've also got some parking concerns that may block from the visibility of the stop signs. Typically, you don't see a yield sign from cross-traffic with a stop sign on one side, it's typically an either-or. So that was, some of the concerns, again, you know, you had 12 that supported it, six that did not support it, and some of the six are concerns were the hill, the inclement weather, the icy conditions.
I travel that route somewhat regularly, and I, it used to be more regularly when I lived in the 6th Ward. The big concern, I think, is more the parking issue and only having one lane of traffic that's passable going east and west. I would not support putting stop signs there, but I would support a parking change if that were to come back to us.
And also the issue of, I don't know if there's any children at play signs that are up on that avenue, if that's a concern, that's what you had cited about?
Yeah, that was what I had heard.
Just raising awareness about it. Maybe, maybe we want to reconsider this in a month, give some more time.
I would be fine with that. I, you know, I'd only heard from one person when I forwarded along to staff, and that's the whole point of this process, so I can withdraw my motion and then move to...
Reconsider?
Postpone, reconsider, whatever, table.
I think that probably the appropriate thing would be to reconsider, or to postpone to a date certain, and pick maybe a meeting three weeks out, four weeks out, because otherwise tabling, you'd have to reconsider it at the next session.
Okay. Well, let's post, I move to postpone this agenda item until the last meeting in October?
Okay, second. Moved to second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The passes. Item number 18.
Mr. Mayor, could, you had already asked to withdraw number 17?
Yes, I did.
Could you explain to us why?
I just, further things have come up that I feel that we need to discuss, you know, that I need to discuss with a few people.
Okay.
Item 18.
Report from the City Clerk regarding requests from Greater Antioch Missionary Baptist Church for a street closing at 10th Avenue between 14th Street and 14th and a half Street and sound amplification for a community block party to be held on Saturday, October 21st, 2017, from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Motion to approve the request as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Should carries. Item 19, is other business. Any other business for the cause?
I would like to make everyone aware, I'm co-hosting an event this Friday with the Rock Island Township, and the, well, it's, the event is hosted by us, but it's being put on by the Illinois Comptroller's Office. It is at the Township Hall, right there on 7th Avenue in 5th Ward. It's at 1:00 this Friday, and it's just a basic personal finances workshop, learn the basics of budgeting, handling debt, just sort of financial 101 for a household. I think that's something that's often ignored when we talk about income inequality and all of the issues surrounding that, is just people understanding how to bank and have basic finance skills. They don't teach that in high school, as far as I know. And so if you are available, I encourage you, it's open to anybody, you don't have to live in 5th Ward. I've had people from Davenport contact me and say, can I come? Yeah, heck yeah. If you want to get some skills on personal finance, please join us.
Any other thoughts?
On Wednesday, September 27, part of the mayor pro tem duties, I was able to fill in for Mayor Tomes and represent the council at the ribbon-cutting for Rock Island Growth's new financial, the Regional Housing and Financial Education Center, which is downtown Rock Island at 114 19th Street. The purpose of this center is to provide, again, speaking about financial literacy, is to help with current homeowners or interested homeowners go through the education process of what that takes. There's a whole range of programs and services that are available through this office downtown Rock Island to help residents ideally buy a home or get an apartment here in Rock Island. So I just want to thank Growth for their long-term commitment to the city. It's a good program.
Very good.
Yes, if possible, at the next council meeting afterwards, if we could have an executive board meeting pertaining to personnel, and I would talk to the city attorney.
Have to find out, yeah, the specific issues, that's right. And I guess I would like to mention, I guess, for the people in the audience and in the public and everyone else, once again, the flags are flying half-mast in respect and due to the unfortunate incident out in Las Vegas, Nevada, a very sad situation, and so that's the reason the flags are at half-mast, and we should keep everybody in our thoughts. If there's nothing else, need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn.